This is the Village Round Lake Beach Council Meeting Minutes. Meeting for the meeting date of June 19th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. Deputy Clerk Hill, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valades?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Abara?
Here.
Trustee Hillsham?
Here.
Our...
Mayor Nichols?
Here. And at this time, can I have a motion for trustee Stout to attend via electronic means while he's out of town for work?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Valades. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, trustee Stout is present. Alright. For the record, deputy clerk Hill is present, attorney Scott Puma is present, director of finance McGinley is present, chief of police Wildy is present, economic developer, development director Rivera is present, and the village planner is present. I'd like to take a moment at this time to recognize today being June 19th. It is an important date in our history as the nation, as the abolition of slavery was finally spread across the country, freeing the last of the enslaved people in Texas on June 19, 1865. Can everyone stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, that was probably the best sounding pledge allegiance this room's had. Thank you very much. Can I have an approval of the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Valades. Second by trustee Abara. Sorry. Second by trustee Abara, all in... All... Oh, my gosh. Can I have a motion approved? I've had a first and a second. Can I have all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Roll call vote, motion will carry. Approval of the council meeting minutes from May 15th, 2023, and the special council meeting minutes from June 12th, 2023. If there's no corrections, can I have it approved for motion and a second as presented?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Hillsham. Second.
Second.
By trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, roll call vote, motion carries. I'm sorry, voice vote, motion carries. Approval of the expenditures tonight for $1,546,532.81. Director McGinley, could you give us a little insight?
Yes, so, thank you mayor. So before you is the kind of expenditures we've had throughout the month of May. The three that were kind of in excess of 100,000, what we would call almost like outliers, would be the, what was called equities to associates for 192,000. This is actually a sales tax rebate that's given to Meyer. So that's given on a quarterly basis, and then because it was in May and we run on, you know, from April to May for the year, it's going to be a lot higher, but going into the next quarter one of this year, obviously it's going to be a lot lower, and it's going to be... So this is something that's kind of a, you know, obviously it's only going to happen once a year that it's this high. The next is the Lake County Public Works, the sewer usage and surcharge. This is just a pass through, going from us, for the citizens of this, of the village, going to Lake County. And then the Blue Cross and Blue Shield is for the benefits for the employees here.
Thank you. Those are our large items as discussed, I know we went through all of them in the committee of the whole. Hearing no other questions, can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Stout. Second by trustee Husk. And a roll call vote, clerk, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, voice vote, our roll call vote will pass, motion carries. Ratifications tonight, we have none. Standing committee reports for the committee of the whole, any of trustees have anything for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Are the Round Lake area queens here tonight? You'd like to come on forward? Like to thank the Round Lake area queens for coming again. We love seeing our ladies out at all of our events, but please, the microphone's yours.
Thank you, good evening. I'm not the best public speaker, so imagine my surprise when I walked in and saw so many citizens excited to meet us tonight. We are doing great, we're having a great year, we just came off our pageant, we are gearing up to do elotee, we are super excited. I'm going to let the girls introduce themselves, and then I'll close with some discussion points for us.
Thank you very much. Ladies, if you'd like, you can hand them the microphone on this one to them, so, because it actually...
Okay, good evening, everyone, hello. My name is Carolina Vilches, I am this year's 2023 Miss Round Lake. I'm very thankful for all of your support. Hopefully, like with this title, I hope to continue working on my platform throughout this year, which is helping our Round Lake area students, like fundraising for them to do activities. So yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for being involved.
My name is Jade, and I am your 2023 Junior Miss Round Lake Area, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cora, and I'm Round Lake Area Queen 2023, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellen Zwicki, and I'm your 2023 Little Miss Round Lake Area Queen. I will be going into the fourth grade at Park School campus this fall, thank you for sponsoring us.
A couple of things they left out is Carolina was actually Miss Elotee, our very first, and then she went on to win Miss Round Lake Area. The pageant represents Round Lake Beach, Round Lake Heights, Round Lake Park, and Round Lake. And Jade is actually a citizen of Round Lake Beach. So I just think that's some personal things that you guys should know. We do appreciate your continued support. I did bring the legalities of the scholarship donation, we are looking just for the same thing as we had last year. I don't remember who to give it to. Okay, I'll give it to you. Oh, do you want me to give it to you?
You can, yeah, we'll hand it on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have already ordered the elotee sashes, they are my favorite sashes ever, because we put the Round Lake Beach logo on them, so we're super excited. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yep.
Please, everyone that's here, let it be known that if you have anyone that is interested in becoming our eloteefest queen, to please check out the website, they are accepting applications still through August 10th. So please check out the website for that, we'd love to have a large turnout.
Absolutely.
So thank you ladies, we greatly appreciate all of what you do in our community, we love seeing you at all of our events, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Alright, the second, chief Wildy, we have our life-saving award presentation. Thanks again, ladies.
Thank you mayor and board, I would like to invite up commander Paul Grace at this time. You guys want to come up here? On May 11th, 2023, you were off duty commuting to work in the morning when you observed a vehicle drifting across lanes in the oncoming traffic. Without hesitation, you went up to the vehicle and noted that the driver was appearing to have a medical emergency. You were unable to gain entry into the moving vehicle and had to break the window out to put the vehicle into park in order to stop it. When the vehicle finally stopped, it had crossed all lanes of traffic and was now resting on the curb in the opposite direction of traffic. You then extracted the driver, who was transported to the hospital by paramedics where he later recovered. This incident occurred very close to the busy intersection of Rollins and Cedar Lake. Your immediate actions and disregard for your own safety not only saved the driver's life, but several others had this vehicle continued into the intersection during the morning commute, most likely causing a serious crash. We would like to congratulate you on a job well done.
Alright. Moving on to item C for the clerk's report, clerk, do we have a report today?
Not tonight.
No clerk's report, so we'll move on to business item A. A resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to Advance Tree Care for not to exceed amount of $70,000 for a fiscal year ending 2024. Director Rivera?
Thank you mayor and board, stepping in for public works director Scott Hiltz. This is something that was already discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. This was a recommendation for this four-year contract with Advance Tree Care that does have experience doing this service in our village. And again, it's for the amount of $70,000.
Thank you very much, as he stated, we did discuss this committee of the whole. Board, any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Hillsham. And an all-in-one, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The eyes have it, motion will carry. Business item B, resolution authorizing waiving competitive bids and approving an award of contract to Burris Equipment Company for a not-to-exceed amount of $38,000. Director Rivera?
Again, mayor and board, this is something that was talked about at the committee of the whole, this is an item that was already budgeted for. Unfortunately, at the beginning of this year, beginning of this budget year, we had one major repair to a loader in Public Works that really took up most of that budget. So this request is to exceed, to extend the contract to Burris to not exceed 38,000 for any future repairs. So the one repair took up the majority of the original 19-5 that was budgeted for this. So that being, that happening sort of down to here, we feel the need to request this be extended for the rest of the year for the other equipment in case it breaks down.
Alright, again, I know director Hiltz did talk about this in the committee of the whole. If there are no questions, trustees, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Davis, second. By trustee Valades, I'm sorry, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Alright, hearing no ayes, a roll call vote, motion will carry. Business item C, a resolution authorizing approving award of contract to Mark Chris Mary Construction LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of $684,830 and a change order of up to $25,000 if certain equipment or electrical upgrades are not timely available in order to complete the project. Director Rivera?
Again, filling in for director Hiltz. On this one, the bid process went out, this is a bid that is being recommended for Mark Chris Mary Construction, again in that amount of $684,830. And that additional to exceed amount is the fact that everyone in the construction industry is experiencing horrific delays logistically when it comes to supply, supplying some of the pieces, so on and so forth. So that's what the change order is for as well, but we're recommending this company, and they have done work on our lift stations in the past, so they are very qualified.
Alright, again, I know director Hiltz talked about this committee of the whole, can I have a motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Valades?
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. All in favor, alright, roll call vote, I mean?
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Roll call vote, eyes have it, motion will carry. Business item D, an ordinance approving a commercial solid waste service franchise agreement with Groot Recycling and Waste Services. Again, this is for the commercial, we have already done the residential. Director, I'm sorry, attorney Scott Puma.
Thank you mayor, this is the end of a long road here to get to a commercial waste hauling contract. The village has conducted two public hearings on this, we're asking that the board approve the lowest proposal, which came in from Groot of the three proposers, and that the village award the contract subject to final attorney and public works director approval.
Alright.
We're still, I believe that we have a final agreement, there are a couple of wording on a couple of things that we need to just make sure that we're final with Groot on. I don't, it doesn't change the terms or anything, it's just a small, a few small things that we need to make sure we're on the same page on.
Alright, again, I know we did discuss this at the committee of the whole, and quite a few times throughout the year. Can I have a motion and a second for the approval of the commercial solid waste service franchise agreement with Groot Recycling?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Abara.
Second.
Second by trustee Davis, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Alright, the eyes have that, motion will carry. Business item E, an ordinance approving a map amendment and special use plan development with certain special uses and departures for property commonly known as 36299 North Illinois Route 83. Director Rivera?
Thank you mayor and board, this is a continuation from our last board meeting. The presentations had already been made, but there was a request by the board to make sure that all questions asked by the residents and the public were answered. So I'd like to thank your staff planner Jim Brown, who went through every email, every verbal question that we could locate through the meeting minutes, he went through all the meeting minutes, and included all those in this document that was prepared, is online, has been available online last week, and I made, I see all the copies are gone, but I made as many copies as a Xerox machine could actually put out, because they're rather large packets, but they are available online. So that being said, again, we recapped all the questions that were asked and all the answers put on there. At this point, if there are no other questions, we would just be requesting board approval for rezoning and special use resolutions for the AR development, as was recommended by the planning and zoning commission.
Alright. I'd like to, at this point, thank everyone for coming today. Government only works correctly when the residents are involved, and it's clear that residents are passionate about this development. This is a zoning issue for the village board. This is privately owned property, and the developer, as all developers in Round Lake Beach, have the right to propose what they want to build on their land. We as a board must only look at the proposed development, and then determine if any variances would be required, and to what extent they are appropriate. This is an extremely difficult decision for the board, village staff, and for me personally. It's one we do not take lightly, but we must follow the state and local statutes and consider only what is allowed by law when making our decisions. With that being... Sorry about that, folks. With that being said, can I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillsham?
Aye.
Roll call vote, motion will carry. At this point, the public participation, if anyone from the public has any questions or comments from the board, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, followed by your question or comment. Please state statue, please state, each person is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Anyone have any comments?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Jacobs, and one of the questions on my mind hasn't... It's not necessarily got anything to do with the business aspect or anything like that, but I'm just a little concerned about what happens with the wildlife that's currently living there, because we routinely get ducks that visit that area, we get cardinals and sandhill cranes and all kinds of other animals that they have nowhere else to go, there's really no other place in this area that they have, they can run to, and once they lose their habitat, they just have nowhere to go. And I'm just, I just want to know if there's a plan to make sure that they can be relocated if this goes through, and what ends up happening to just the environmental aspect, to make sure that they're not just ignored or dismissed.
This is comment section, but I will just, for the sake of making sure some of your questions answered. This is public property, we can't, private property, I'm sorry, and we can't do anything with that. But there is a park there, there is other, I mean, Lake County is full of the wildlife, so we can't control what happens with your property or anyone else's property. So to answer the question, they'll live their lives and go on through other areas, just like... Sorry, did I understand? Go ahead.
I would say, mayor, if I may, I, and having lived in the area, I would also point out the fact that as the subdivisions exist there now was all part of the greater Round Savannah, that there still is a humongous nature preserve in the Round Savannah for animals to go to, and to be seen, and to walk those paths, and this at one point was part of that, just like these homes now have taken up that as well. But again, as you mentioned, mayor, it is a private parcel.
The developer has complied with all requirements for submission to DNR and the Echo Cat, so they are in compliance with the natural resources inventory.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Joseph Pitt, 2326 Masters Lane, this is comment. I hope you are all satisfied, you've made your decision, you could have, you are right, you have to follow the law. But at any point, you could have denied the motion to take it up in the first place. So, I hope you're all satisfied, you have a room and now a neighborhood full of people who vote, and will remember this. I just want to make sure you are aware, because at the end of this... At the end of this, you have allowed a predatory landlord into our city with a proven F-rating from the Better Business Bureau. That is, without doubt, one of the most reckless decisions I think I've seen since I've moved here. Thank you.
Patrick Sheeran, 2337 Scott Court, Round Lake Beach, resident over 29 years in the Fox Chase subdivision. It would have been nice for this kind of disclosure to be made while public comments were open during the planning commission process. Unfortunately, they were only available through FOIAs, that I'm aware of, since I had to submit two FOIAs myself to obtain them.
Whole packet was put out on Friday, sir.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm pointing out, it would have been...
Friday before board meeting.
Okay, for the board members at a occasion.
No, sir.
Yeah.
It's online.
Oh, now, now it's online.
Mayor, if I could just point out...
Please, I only have three minutes.
I apologize, you're correct, so you're correct.
Yeah. You can wait until my three minutes are over, if you would. Really, this is, in my opinion, as I'm working professional in the construction industry from the municipal side, a disservice to the residents of Round Lake Beach, both at the planning commission level, with the lack of depth of review of this proposal. The only reason for granting or asking for these variations is greed, is the money that's being generated on a site that is not suitable for four-story apartments and 204 units. The farm property the other side of the road is available, twice the size, no FAR requirements, no additional stories, no density variations would have been required for that site if they had chosen the correct site, and much closer to what the comprehensive plan envisioned. So if I could get a countdown on when my three minutes are up, since you are timing it. This is, this is not good government. And as the gentleman before me said, the residents of Scott Court, Fox Chase, and maybe the wider community will remember. Thank you for the Nichols Apartments.
Hi, my name's Jim...
Excuse me just a moment. I don't know where the comment would come from. Huh, the Nichols Apartments?
Well, it's your, your owning it.
Mayor, if I may, if I may, and I do apologize, sir, for cutting you off. You're correct, you were entitled to your three minutes. If I just may, for the board, the questions, and if you look at the packet for residents as well, if you look at those questions, do understand that while these questions were put together over three to four weeks that our staff planner put them together, the answers to these questions are provided in, that were taken from the minutes of every meeting. These questions were answered at every meeting, as I mentioned at the second planning and zoning commission, as I mentioned at the third, at the first village board meeting, they were answered in there. Other than engineering-specific questions, which are still to be detailed out once we have final plans, these were answered, and so when you see the answers in the comment section, board and mayor, you're going to see that these answers were taken from minutes at that point. So I do understand that people are disappointed, but the questions were answered then, these are reanswering those same questions.
Thank you, go ahead, sir.
Can I go now?
Yeah.
Jim Gorney, I live at 910 Millstone, I bought the house new, so I've been here for, I don't know, 30 years. I got a question at the first zoning meeting when we did public comment. Half of the zoning board was not there, they were missing, so they missed a lot of the public comment. When they readdressed it, when there was more board members there, or the commission, whatever it is, they didn't hear those questions, and they wouldn't let us repeat anything that was said in the first meeting. So they missed a lot of the questions, they might have saw it in paper, but they didn't see the passion. And for the attorney, I'm wondering, what legal standard was there to change the zoning? Is there a law saying, yeah, these guys came up with a, with a plan, so we have to change the zoning? You didn't have to do that, and that's on each one of you in the zoning commission, and we'll remember that. So when you say everything by law, we do it by the law, you didn't have to do it. I see you. And my uncle was a member of this board in the 70s, early 70s, he was a trustee of this town. And I think you did him and all of us a disservice by caving in and not listening to the people. In here, there was finding of facts. Not once did it say, the community don't want it, that's a finding of fact. All you did was regurgitate whatever they put out in front of you. Yeah, oh, traffic study, oh, this, oh, it's going to increase this. We could say the same shit, make it, excuse the French, make it up, you know, hey, it would be great, we could, you know, it's going to... But there's not, none of that in here, just regurgitated stuff that they said. So I think you all did it wrong, and we will remember, come voting. Not a threat, that's a promise, I might be sitting up there, damn, I could do that. You want to vote for me? Jim Gorney, I'm running next time. Thank you.
Joanne Hungness, 2284 Masters Lane. To the gentleman's earlier point, and I'm sorry, no disrespect to you... Um, to the gentleman's earlier point, and I'm sorry, no disrespect to you, but, um, he's right. Half the board was missing at the first meeting. We were-
Have to have a quorum to have a meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, like, I'm new to all this. This is the first time I've ever come to any of these meetings, so I will be sure to be coming from now on. But people were missing, you couldn't hear half the time, um, when people were speaking. We had the second meeting, we had to keep yelling, we can't hear you, we can't hear you. Nobody would go close to the microphones, close enough, things like that. Gil, you say that our questions were answered, our questions were answered. This would have been nice at last month's meeting, when we were assured that all the minutes were read, all the videos were watched, you, sir, had told all of us that, you had personally watched all of it, all the meetings. I talked to Jim Brown, he said they had a hard time translating the minutes because you couldn't hear anybody. And so I think that's, you know, this is, you know, some of the aggravation here is that now we have this huge document and we get to read through it while you guys go ahead and vote tonight. I get a little confused by the proceedings, because I don't know if when you guys all did the aye, 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 was that an aye for yes, we're moving forward with the build, or was that an aye for the now we can vote? Because I get a little, they are a little confusing.
Oh, you have a mo-
So this is a word for a word.
You have a motion and a second saying that they're, they want to put the vote through? And then you have a aye, which means-
Yeah, it, because it does get a little confusing. But I, you know, a lot of us, like, this will now answer questions, but now this is too late, and if it was put out on Friday, please tell me where to find it on your website, because as Gil has said several times, the website is not good, you are hiring a new company to build a better website. We can't find anything on the website, so it stinks for us because we couldn't get, I mean, we've all been heavily involved and, and feel like this was going to get, this was going to be a yes, no matter what we did, right? Nobody was going to say no to a big building. And so, um, anyway, but the website's terrible. Nobody gets information, and this came out on Friday. Well, yay, it's Monday, and how, you can't even find it. You, I would love for you to sit and show me exactly where I would have found this on the website. That would be great, because it should have been like on the front page of the website, right? Like, okay, everybody, because this is, and if it is, I don't know, because I don't go to the website anymore because it sucks. But anyway, i- it just, so this is a shame that now we had to wait all this time to have the answers, and I'm, I did my timer this time.
Just, just so you know, the, the questions have been through there, that have been through there, were all questions that were asked and answered in meetings. He stated that as well.
But they weren't fully answered. They were not fully answered, I promise you that, and if you were not at those meetings, and you weren't, they were not fully answered. The, the traffic study was vague. It was vague, and stuff like that, but there were a lot of questions that were, they were not answered.
All right.
But now, in reading this, the first five pages, I've gotten some answers, right? But this would have been great to have at last month's meeting. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Hello. Hello, thank you again for letting me speak. My name is Anthony Finan. I live at six-five-three East Peachtree Lane in Round Lake Beach. It's the Silver Oaks subdivision, and I remind you, I'm a social studies teacher at a middle school, and I have taught the U.S. Constitution. I brought this up the last time, because we have a representative democracy, which means, and at the last meeting, I believe, three members were sworn in after an election to represent the people of Round Lake Beach. To listen to the constituents and to be their voice, and their voices spoke very loudly. At the last meeting, there was a motion to pass, and your response was deafening. We all heard it. It was silent. There was no motion. There was no motion. Now suddenly, without any voice heard from your constituents, you went ahead and passed this. Does not sound like a representative democracy. You did not represent the people that, that voted you in. The people from Pennsylvania will build their building, they'll leave, they'll, they'll increase their portfolio. We will not see them again. And then these people will have to live with what is being built there, and I'm disappointed.
Hello. Name's Dan Guera, two-four-two-two Bridal Circle in Round Lake Beach. Uh, my comment's directed to the builder, and basically two comments. The first one, as Jason stated with the plan, um, again, the property next to the Home Depot would fit what was laid out for the benefit of the community, the utilities, and the walkability to a metro station. So that's the first consideration. The second, if we do go through with this, regardless of the traffic studies and everything that was there, would you consider contacting IDOT and appeasing some of the residents with at least a stoplight at that intersection? And that's it.
Mayor, Board, I'm not here to bash. I want you to know I'm very disappointed. I live at ten-sixty-two Fox Chase. I want to know if you will pass more money so that the officers can be on our streets when my grandchildren almost get run over. Because if something happens, God, God help you, because it will not be nice. You just put every child that lives in this neighborhood in danger of people driving crazy. People go faster, and I know that they're not built yet, so, but I'm asking, can I call the police every time somebody does a ninety miles an hour down my street? Can I yell at people? What do I do about the person who hits my special needs grandson, who cannot speak and cannot walk very well? So he's not going to run out of the way of an incoming car because he doesn't understand it. I'm just saying, please think before you do this again to any other neighborhood in this village. I've lived here for over forty years, and I'm just saying, I'm really thinking about moving. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jonathan Demuth. I've been up here a few times. I live at two-two-five-one Masters Lane, Round Lake Beach, Illinois. Nice to see you all today. I just wanted to bring up a couple of the concerns from one of the other gentlemen's who was up here earlier. He was talking about how A&R has some pretty lackluster reviews for the Better Business Bureau, as well as across the board, essentially. I kind of want to just go over a little bit of why that is. Uh, most of it is because of poor business practices. You have one guy who got charged three months of rent due to the fact that he was on the waiting list and decided to leave the waiting list, and they said, well, that meant you were, uh, basically owning an apartment, so you get the cancellation fee. Uh, another guy who wasn't even living in the apartments got charged an HOA fee, um, for the pool access that he doesn't actually have to the apartments nearby, so if they try to bring that up to you guys in the future, please don't. Um, yeah, that was actually a thing. And then more people were complaining about just shoddy raises in their rent, shoddy changes to their leases without any notification prior, and just of the sort. Basically, the company does not seem very trustworthy. I understand something has to go there, and frankly, if an apartment has to go there, apartments have to go there. I'm honestly kind of okay with it at this point, but I'm just not sure if this is the company to do it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Liefel. I live at, currently at ten-twenty-seven Bugle Lane. I've lived there for just high of thirty years, and this is how much faith I had in all of you. I've sold my home. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name's Thomas Quigley. I live in twenty-one-forty North Kelly King Court. I've been there since nineteen ninety-five, so the end of the apartment complex is going to be right at, close to that strip mall. And, uh, there's no doubt in my mind that this, uh, construction will damage the value of all the homes in that area that are there right now. No question about it, and that will be a permanent damage. And God knows what's going to happen in that, in that apartment complex, the garbage that's going to appear, the massive amount of cars that's going to interfere with the regular uh, community that lives there right now. So I, I'm totally against building that. It's, to me, it's a travesty and it's an example of corrupt government at the, at the most basic level. You know, we're all sick of government from the top. Apparently, apparently you guys got the memo to be just as corrupt as everybody else in this country. So, thanks for reading your emails. That goes for you too, sir. Okay? You too. So, we know that it's going to damage the community, and it adds nothing to the rest of Round Lake Beach, but it will damage Fox Chase, it will damage Sweetwater Mill, it will damage across the street, I forget the name of that subdivision at the moment, Silver Oaks, definitely damage all of that. So, I hope, as the gentleman said earlier, that all of you get voted out the next time. When are you going to get vote, when's your next election? I'd like to know, because I want to make sure to go and vote all of you guys out. You probably don't even care about this community, uh, you'll probably all leave once you're voted out. But I will tell you this, th- this is a total, total travesty and an intru- intrusion on what has been a very good community. It adds nothing to that community, it distracts tremendously, and it adds nothing to the overall Round Lake Beach community. So, keep reading those emails from the White House and then, and, and, and do more of this crap, and we're sick of it.
Chris McLaughlin, nine-one-nine Fox Chase Drive, been here since nineteen ninety-six. We all knew this was going to go like this. There's no doubt in our mind. Trustees told us the last meeting, when nobody would make a motion, then something was done, and then we all heard, everybody agreed to it. Now, I think one thing we could say, we couldn't stop this, but there's still something you could do. As you hear, most of the complaints are talking about the traffic. The traffic study, we all know about the traffic study. If you take, the one question was never answered, was it ever thought of to take the in and out of the development on eighty-three and don't bring it on our street? Nobody ever answered that. Developer, I believe, he said there's no need. Traffic study spoke for itself. All these people are talking about children. Where are all the cars parking? On our street. They don't have enough. They're going to be parking on our street, so why not reconsider and take it out eighty-three and not into our street? That's all.
Hi, I'm Sheri Demuth Clover. Um, been resident of Fox Chase since two thousand and two. Just wanted to mention the accident that happened today. Uh, we live on Masters Lane, obviously. We saw the traffic coming through and they were racing through our subdivision. There was no police coming through our subdivision. When I first moved there, it was great. I had, you know, I had a son in fourth grade who just spoke, and we had police patrolling, everything, you know, was, was good. There's no patrol in there anymore, and now we're getting, what, four hundred residents coming in possibly, and the traffic as well? And like I said, we, we, we had to go out of the subdivision to avoid the accident, obviously, um, the opposite way, but people were like veering, like, these ki- I had, we saw a kid right in front of our house, couldn't, couldn't like cross the street for fifteen minutes because he was afraid to cross the street. We were going to go out there and help him. He finally decided to go down the street to try to do this, so please, not only have police patrol in the subdivision, but also consider the stoplight. We can't go, the traffic, uh, study that they did said that, oh, there was two cars stacked up, because no one turns left, they can't, it's a death zone. Um, you cannot turn left, you have to turn right and possibly turn around in another subdivision, but just consider that traffic and the kids again, because like I said, it was a safe neighborhood for the traffic wise, but now, not so much. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jesus. I'm, uh, twenty-three-forty-three Scott Court. I live, uh, just across three from the park. I have two young kids. I'm really concerned about if you're having issues filling in the apartments, are they going to bring session eight people? Are they going to bring session eight people to the apartments?
Been asked and answered.
Okay, all right, well, this is my biggest concern, because the kids feel, play safe in the park and bring other kids. We know how those kids are, unfortunately, it's not good. Just, thank you.
All right. Um, right now, we are open, uh, closing public participation. We do have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, executive session minutes, personnel and collective bargaining. Can I have a roll call, uh, can I have a roll, uh, motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by trustee Val- I'm sorry. Second by trustee Abara. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Let's see, trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Valdez.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Abara?
Aye.
Trustee Hillesheim?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Mayor Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee, can you hear me? Trustee Stout?
Yes, I can.
We'll call you and do a, uh, phone for executive.
Okay, that's cool.
Thank you.